Calling to order the work session of the Anchorage School Board. Today is Monday, March 19th, 2018, and we have six board members present. Mr. Donley is at the Council of Great City Schools Conference in Washington, DC. He may be joining us via telephonically a little later in this work session. So, the first item on our agenda, Dr. Bishop, is in your court about Lions Quest: Capturing Kids' Heart and Coaching Greatness.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I would request the team to come up and as we're going to have the folks in the different divisions share some information. Throughout this year, there's been some work done with Lions Quest, Capturing Kids' Hearts, and Coaching Greatness, and really with the MTSS on the behavioral side. So those were the requests that came from board members to just have a better mind's eye about when we talk about these different programs or aspects of our training, what it looks like and how does it fit with the big picture. So I have requested our Executive Director of Elementary Education, Mr. Glenn, and[76.72][76.72][laughter] and Ms. Kirsten to come forward as our Secondary Executive Director to assist and to really share the specifics about the programs. But as an overview, we did speak to an MTSS model just being a system of support, and the need for that was the varied experiences as well as student needs within the classroom, whether they are on the academic or behavioral side. If you recall, we shared map data that demonstrated in any one classroom in fourth grade, we had beginning readers, right, Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
And as well as students that were ready in a fourth grade for high school reading. So how do we support our teachers in being able to have student growth year to year or even catch-up growth more than one year? So the same is true on the behavioral side. And should I wait, Madam President, until the person's on the phone or just keep going?
Keep going.
Okay, keep going. So that was shared before. So now, the MTSS Tier One for secondary schools, and really it's in the social-emotional learning realm, and the big why in the picture is the success, as we know it in the real world, takes more than academic knowledge. Successful adults have the confidence to express themselves well and rise above their circumstances. They get along with others, take responsibility, and handle problems that arise by making good decisions. So we have academics and that academic learning, but we also, on the other side of the house, really want to rear and help educate young, confident, self-assured individuals that will enter into our world, making great decisions and having happy lives for themselves. So with that, we'll share not only the secondary items that are going on, but also the elementary part. And I just had to set the stage, and we have Kirsten Johnson-Strumpler as well as Glenn Nielsen to actually be the experts here.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to start first with our middle school program. The primary program that we use at the middle school level for Tier One students is Lions Quest. And we've partnered with Lions Quest International, and they have provided both curriculum funds to us and some training to our teachers that we've also facilitated. So we actually have the largest grant given in the entire country, so that's pretty significant just to note. But it's a great partnership, and they come and do site visits even, and we have a really great thing going with them. So just what is Lions Quest in general? So it's about a once-a-week lesson that teachers teach at the middle school level, and it incorporates lots of different units, and the topics change week to week, but it's all social-emotional learning. It talks a lot about character development. It talks a lot about bullying and drug prevention, and it also has a service-learning component. And what's interesting about implementing these things in lessons at the middle school level is that at middle school, that age range is the greatest rate of development for students since infancy. So they learn a lot during that time, and they change a lot during that time, so it's a great time to really introduce a lot of these topics and set the stage for beyond middle school and into adulthood. So in the school and classroom environment, what you see as a result is that it promotes positive student behaviors and it definitely supports academic success. So just some basics about Lions Quest. There's 211 total staff that are trained to date. There will be more next year, and I'll get into that a little bit in the next slide, but there are roughly 4,230 students that are currently impacted by the Lions Quest program. And participating this year are the schools you see listed on the slide. There are six middle schools in Polaris that are participating this year, with the rest of our middle schools coming online next year, which I'll talk about next. So in the 18-19 school year, we will train an additional 180 students, and another 2,800 or so students will be impacted by the curriculum as well. So that's a significant amount of our student body in the Anchorage School District that's impacted by this curriculum. And the schools coming onboard next year are Mirlake, Romack, Wendler, and Begich. Each of those schools was, two of those schools were Capturing Kids' Hearts schools this year, so their focus was there. And the other two schools are participating in a Cook-in-Let Tribal Council grant that addressed social-emotional needs, so we wanted them to focus on those efforts this year, and we're bringing them on for the following year. So at the trainings for Lions Quest, we asked teachers to give us some feedback at the end of the training. And what you see on this slide are some of the quotes from teachers at the end of the training. So just as an example, "I understand how SEL makes learning more effective. It's positive and hands-on training." Feeling like a student that goes from uninvolved to involved, all really positive feedback from our middle school teachers, once they understood the curriculum, got to see it and work with it, and were trained on it. And I've heard good things about it all year long, honestly, so. Yeah. Madam President, do you want to take questions now or at the end?
Ms. Marsette.
I know you're getting ready to go to the next one, so I just want to, and did you say this is for Tier Two students?
This is for Tier One.
Tier One?
Yep.
So all students?
All.
So it's just Tier One, it's not Two and Three?
It's actually all students.
All students.
Yeah. Just for clarity, so that as we move on when we talk about MTSS, that students aren't tiered, it's actually about the instruction.
Right.
So this is a Tier One instruction, meaning that
All students.
Everyone has access to it. And so that this is our baseline structure of learning, and then if we're not successful with kids, say with drug and alcohol or bullying or this, then we step it up to a Tier Two. So, but this is a Tier One instructional program on the behavioral side.
Ms. Plunkett.
So my question is on the Training Impact, the slide that's up now. Is this just for the 211 staff that's already trained?
Yes.
And actually using the process right now?
Yeah. These quotes were from those 211 teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Holloman?
Is there anything about this that looks more broad-based than simply students and instruction? I mean, do we, does this come into our own personnel policies, our own interactions between staff and schools and whatnot?
Can you give me an example of what you're thinking?
Well, I think there's a broad element to SEL that just relates to how people treat each other.
Right.
And is that aligned with our actual practice, or does our actual practice align? I guess in a way, I'm saying, do we simply teach this to other people, or is this a part of, say, a core value of the S D?
Sure. I think that a lot of the skills that are taught in this program, I've looked through the curriculum, are definitely skills that we would expect our employees to treat each other as in the workplace. Do I have data to support that? Not necessarily, but it's all about being a good citizen and how you treat other people, essentially, so. Yeah. So shifting gears a little bit, I want to move on to the high school realm, well, actually all of our secondary schools, and why Capturing Kids' Hearts and a little bit more about Capturing Kids' Hearts. And so there's this quote that I'd like to read. "Teachers face a formidable challenge. They must raise the bar on student performance while competing against social, environmental, and outside pressures as never before." So that's by the Flippin Group, who is the creator of Capturing Kids' Hearts. And the idea is that we want to prepare kids not just academically, but like I kind of said earlier, to be good citizens, to be good employees, and that's really where Capturing Kids' Hearts comes into play. It's about a school culture, a classroom culture, and how you navigate yourself successfully in that culture in school. So just some basics about Capturing Kids' Hearts. I know we've talked about it before, but just to give you some reminders about the components, the idea of Capturing Kids' Hearts is that we develop self-managing classrooms, and I'll get into that a little bit more as we go on. It also is about decreasing the behavior we don't want to see in classrooms and discipline issues. It's also about utilizing the Excel model, which I think we're all fairly familiar with at this point, and it definitely reinforces any of those social-emotional lessons that we've done either in middle school prior to them navigating in a Capturing Kids' Hearts school or from middle school to high school. And we really want to build classroom rapport and teamwork, because that's something that's really essential as you move on from the K-12 system, is how do you work in a team? How do you build rapport with other people that you work with? That's a pretty essential skill. And we also want them to develop empathy for different cultures and backgrounds. That's just a part of the world that our kids live in and need to be able to navigate. So we also want to make them feel a part of the community, increase their attendance and their attachment to school, and we want to help motivate them and have them really take some self-responsibility on as a part of being in that classroom environment. So the primary skills that are used in Capturing Kids' Hearts at the classroom level are to use the Excel Leadership Relationship Teaching Model. So that's to, so if you don't remember what Excel stands for, it's engage, it's explore, it's to communicate, it's to empower, and then it's to launch. So just like you would use this on an executive level in a meeting, you use this in your classroom as well. So you would engage and talk about greeting folks, and it's not just about the handshake at the door, but it's about engaging with that student as they walk into your room, and then you would follow the rest of the model as you teach your lesson that day as well, and launch at the end of the lesson so that they have a closure to the class and are launched to the next thing. So a big part of it is also the social contract. So that's developed at the beginning of a semester or a school year, depending on if it's a semester course or a year-long course. And that's a community-building thing that students have input and the teacher has input too as well. There's also a four-question process for redirecting behavior. So rather than just calling a student on their behavior, there's a questioning process that teachers go through so that it makes students think about how they're acting and how they can redirect themselves within the classroom. And there's a similar process for questions and redirect, or addressing disrespectful behavior in a classroom. And students can actually do this to each other. It's part of the classroom community and the social contract. And then there's the solar listening skills, and that's something that's taught to students too. How do you be a good listener, essentially? So, and it teaches you very explicitly what those mean. So, and just going back to the solar listening skills, so you know what it stands for, it's an acronym. S stands for square up to the person, so you're looking at them. O stands for open posture, so you're not closed off to the person and, you know, like turned away, that they feel safe to talk to you, that you lean in, that you make eye contact, and that you relax and respond, so you're not coming across as an aggressive kind of presence. So it teaches students how to calm down and relax and have those good listening skills in the classroom. So next slide. So just some basics about our training for Capturing Kids' Hearts. So far, we've trained 618 staff that are participating in the program this year at Bartlett, West, Begich, and Romack. And those staff were trained in August of 2017. We just completed a training in February for some schools that are coming online to Capturing Kids' Hearts in the fall of 2018. Eagle River, Chuyac, Clark, and Central all participated in that training. And then we'll have another training in August that will train East, Greening, and Central. And so all of those schools that are participating either in February or in August are all starting Capturing Kids' Hearts in August of 2018. So we're making some good headway.
Would you like to finish this slide or take questions now?
I can take questions.
Ms. Marsette.
So when we talk about the social contract and teaching our children the four questions for redirecting behavior and how the students can use that also, how are we communicating that in high school? I hear in middle school, there's actually a one-week, a once-a-week time that they spend with them, but how is that being done in high school?
So in high school, a lot of, this next slide I'm going to talk about is the Process of Champions Team, and that team's established at every Capturing Kids' Hearts school, and as, it's their job essentially to champion the cause, which is why they're called the Process Champions Team. And so when issues come, like when staff needs to be reminded about things or issues come up, maybe it's not working well, that team problem solves that, and they have a staff discussion.
And might I add, the Lions Quest is actually a set curriculum that has a lesson a week. That's different. Capturing Kids' Hearts is really just a process of how to do business. So classrooms and teachers have, and schools have always set their classroom expectations. Walk in the hall, don't hit, face, all those things. So essentially, what we're doing is, part of Capturing Kids' Hearts is really redirecting that to have buy-in from students. So the students create, the class creates the contract, and then the class creates the, I guess, the expectations of what they'll do, and they use these questions, and they're like, what are you doing, what are you supposed to be doing? Students can, because you create a respectful environment, we had some teachers talk about it who came here, where kids can call out another child by saying, wait a minute, that was a foul. So not even the two kids that are involved in the altercation, somebody else in the classroom can say, that's a foul, and then they have to deal with it. So Capturing Kids' Hearts isn't, there's no book that goes with it. It's literally what you do every day and your expectations in the classroom, but part of that buy-in is that kids help create it. And the school then collectively says, we're, these are our values, you know, this is what we're going to value. And there are questions like, how do you want to be treated in this classroom? How do you think the teacher wants to be treated? How do you think, you know, those are the kinds of the questions that they process through, and essentially you come to the end of the thing going, man, everybody really wants the same thing. So then those questions are created about how we would treat others, how we treat a guest. When someone's up in the front, how are we an audience? If we were speaking in the front, how would we want the audience to behave with us? So the kids are answering those questions, and then you just always go back to, oh, what did our contract say? So it's not, stop that behavior, you're doing this, you're always just questioning back, like, what did we say? So, but there really isn't an hour a time that says it's the Capturing Kids' Hearts time. However, on Lions Quest, there literally is a curriculum, and it is teaching that.
Just one segue to this, and then I'll call Ms. Plunkett. So there's, there are some redundancies, but they have a different purpose. One is to set up the culture, and the other is to utilize a curriculum to expand deep in social-emotional learning skills. Is that an accurate assessment?
That's correct, Madam President, yep. So the Lions Quest curriculum teaches specific skills, and there's a specific lesson you do for the day. The Capturing Kids' Hearts culture building is more about how you treat each other on a daily basis. So it's really about having a common system in the school to have those conversations with students and to engage the students in the process, whereas the Lions Quest curriculum really teaches a specific skill set.
And then the segue to that, I understand that there's also, between administration and teachers, there's also a social contract.
Correct. You're very correct, yep. I actually had the opportunity to be at Bartlett when they were having that staff discussion at the beginning of the year, in a staff meeting, they were discussing different disrespectful behaviors and how they would be worked through as a staff, and they, they had a very rich conversation where the whole staff had input to that and buy-in. So just like you would have with students in your classroom, you have a staff who's really having that conversation and buying into, this is our culture and this is what we believe at our school.
Okay, Ms. Plunkett.
So it looks like there are two or three, Begich, Clark, Central, that are doing both Lions Quest and Capturing Kids' Heart. Do you see all of the middle schools doing both, or was it just those three? Or do you see that expanding and, you know, I'm trying to think of why either they all would or they wouldn't, trying to process that.
Sure. Through the President, member Plunkett, we, our plan is for all middle schools and high schools to be Capturing Kids' Hearts trained, and we have a three-year plan developed for that. So after this next school year, the 18-19 school year, there's another set of training that the remainder of our schools will go through, and at the end of the 19, sorry, I'm trying to track the dates, the 19-20 school year, all schools will have implemented Capturing Kids' Hearts at the secondary level. For Lions Quest, the remainder of our middle schools will come onboard next year, so they will all be doing Lions Quest, so.
Ms. Marsette.
So I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, but I'm still, I guess, I understand, you know, one's a classroom and one's a culture, I get it. What I'm trying to figure out is how are we incorporating that culture into every classroom? Because you have the leadership, we talked about the team leadership, which is like this club or certain group of students, right? But they're not from every classroom, it's just a group that wants to belong to this or have been asked to belong to it. And so even though you have the teachers trained, how does this work in the classroom? And how do they extend that culture or that, that social contract in a high school when you're talking about implementing this culture? I mean, I get it where we're starting with this group, but I guess I want to know, as a teacher in a classroom, how am I getting this to other students that they would know the four questions, or, you know, how could we work this into the classroom? Because they all take different classes, and, you know, they're not always the same thing. So I'm just wondering how that's working as a whole.
I can share, because I, every teacher in every class is a capturing, if you're a Capturing Kids' Hearts school, every teacher in every class establishes a contract. So all those, so literally, the kids, if they're in six classes, they're going to have six social contracts. And so they're, and that's one of the things where they say, well, that's just, oh, don't tell me, I'm going to go to my third period, and guess what, we're going to do a social contract. Well, before it was a social contract, guess what it was? The teacher told you what the rules were. So it's essentially the same thing of the first day of school going through this. But the team leadership is actually separate than this. So Capturing Kids' Hearts is school-wide, how do we solve problems, how do we do business, what does it look like in the halls? And it really is kind of taking the, the goal of it is to take that, the teachers already have, any adult in the system, whether it's a custodian, a teacher, an aide, a principal, the adults in the system already have the informal power and the formal power, really. And so how do we work within that kind of ecosystem of a school? And we had teachers who, some of them questioned it from Bartlett, remember, they loved it, but they struggled with a certain section. And then we had a West teacher come and say, oh, my gosh, this was, this is what I needed to continue to love to teach. And so it's every classroom, every day, and kids literally have social contracts for every class period, and they'll look different, but essentially, if you go through, there's a theme through them, because really, we technically all want the same thing. You know, I went into, I guess one that was different, I went into an IT classroom, and the kids on there, I read the social contract, said something like, you got to love nerds or something. I mean, it was just, they have fun with it, and they create it, and it is theirs, but all of them are that respecting. The other thing she talked about is this Process Champions creates a team that is a leadership team in your school to help, like when new staff comes in, or you're going to have a problem in a
Of teachers, not students.
Of teachers. And you're going to have a problem in a school where you say, man, this just keeps occurring, how do we help? How do we help solve this? And then they'll process that. That's why it's called Process Champions. So, but then there's also team leadership, you kind of got to have in knowing that. So I'll turn it back over to Kirsten, but every classroom, every day.
Yeah. Thank you. So let me talk about Process Champions really quick. This is the last portion of Capturing Kids' Hearts that I wanted to go to. As the superintendent stated, it's a team of teachers and other staff at the school that they really want to be a part of the group. It's not, we're paying you to be on this, or we're dragging you to be on this. It's people who really believe in the purpose of Capturing Kids' Hearts and essentially want to be cheerleaders for the program. So it's their job to work with staff individually if they need help with different issues. They also receive different training from the Flippin Group that's more extensive than the rest of the staff, and then they also meet on a regular basis to problem-solve different issues that are going on in the school so that they have this school-wide plan for how to address that. So that's where a lot of the problem-solving comes in, you know, each school has their own little things that happen, and as they happen, this group really manages that for the staff, and also does some professional development at staff meetings and those types of things. So that's essentially what the Process of Champions skills do. The other part of what they do are to be good role models for their peers, their other staff members in the building. So if they are going to get up and talk about Capturing Kids' Hearts and problem-solve all these issues, they, they are employing that in their own classrooms at a very high rate of success, so.
So I have an additional question. In the middle school, and I'm, less so in the high school, but definitely the middle school, there's potential, there's a need for a social contract in the lunchroom. Is this done as a whole school for the lunchroom, or is it still the traditional, these are the rules, violate them, you lose privileges, la di da?
Sure. Madam President, you could do it for the lunchroom if that's something that is a school-wide issue, that's something that the Process Champions team would work on. They would develop either a social contract with the staff, or maybe they would bring in student government or, or different representatives from different schools, and they would problem-solve that social contract for the lunchroom so that there was buy-in, just like there is in a social contract in the classroom for that particular area of school.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. So another program that ties into Capturing Kids' Hearts that we are exploring and hoping to bring onboard, and I think that there's been a lot of interest at the board level, is the Teen Leadership Program. And this is a specific program for students at the secondary level, and they actually can take this as a course in their day. So in looking forward at possibilities, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about what teen leadership is and how it ties into what you've already heard about Capturing Kids' Hearts. So obviously, it's called teen leadership, so it focuses on leadership skills for students. It really focuses on personal responsibility and self-efficacy and how you navigate in a hard world sometimes by resisting peer pressure. So it teaches you specific skills on how to resist peer pressure, how to be a leader. You talk a lot about consequences of choices as you're processing those types of things. You focus on healthy relationships as well. That's a major issue for our secondary student population. We talk about conflict resolution and how you have conflict and then, and work through that productively. There's also a section on goal-setting, which is a good, a good skill for us to really teach explicitly to kids, and then public speaking is also a part of it as well. And it, it does a lot of relationship building between the skills you're learning in that teen leadership course and how that translates to the job world and, and making that transition. So, so just in looking ahead, teen leadership is something that we're definitely interested in, so we can get more explicit in our instruction around our Capturing Kids' Hearts, so. One thing that I actually really appreciate about the Flippin Group and Capturing Kids' Hearts is that there's a coaching component, and that's called Coaching Greatness. And we did our first training on coaching for greatness this fall, right before Thanksgiving. It was a great success, and I'll talk about the details of that in a little bit, but just so you know what coaching for greatness is, obviously, it's for our coaches. And for, for those of you that have played sports or had kids in sports, you know that that's a pretty essential part of your growing-up experience, and coaches can be super influential. And so getting coaches onboard at the secondary level with this philosophy and having student buy-in and talking about how we treat people and social contracts is really important piece to the puzzle for, for our secondary students. So it really focuses, just like Capturing Kids' Hearts, on creating healthy relationships with kids, and the coach in this instance, or the adult. And the coach in this instance, or the adult, and how you establish a productive culture on a team, it emphasizes that. And then part of the Coaching for Greatness set of training is how, as a coach, you reach your full potential. And it, it does a lot of talking about, it has an inventory that the coaches take, just like the administrative training did, that you've heard about before, so that you know your strengths and weaknesses as a coach. And it also talks about how do you, to work with your strengths and weaknesses or your constraints, is what the Flippin Group refers to them as. So, so it really works with you as an individual to not only hire assistant coaches that are going to be good for your team and complement you as a coach, as a head coach on a team, but how you work with your athletes in, in a particular setting. So, so in the fall, like I had mentioned before, we had our first Coaching for Greatness training. We trained roughly forty coaches and assistant coaches. We focused at that time on fall and winter sports because the time we did the training was right at the end of the fall sports season and right at the beginning of the winter season. So we wanted to catch coaches that were focused on their athletes at that point in time and really give them some tools to either, for our fall coaches really mull over for the next season, or for our winter coaches to give them kind of a jumpstart on their winter sports season. So we were able to get most of our head coaches at that training that coach at the high school level, fall and winter sports. We also invited our athletic directors at all of our Big Eight high schools, so they were trained as well. And then I also worked in collaboration with the staff at the Alaska Sports and Activities Association. And many of, we had about five of their staff members, they have a small staff, so about five of their staff members were able to participate in the two-day training in November as well. We wanted to really work with ASAW so that they knew where our philosophy was coming from and, and they, they understood it, so. So the feedback that we got from our Coaching for Greatness training was very, very positive. We received emails from a variety of the coaches that were there that day that were so thankful to be a part of a, a training for coaches because we, we honestly don't have a lot of training for our coaches. We just say, welcome to the job, you know, and thanks for, for being here, you know. So there's not a lot of specific to-coaches training that we do at the secondary level. So that's another reason why this is a really great asset for our coaches. And the ASAA staff was really thankful to be invited and, and were happy to be a part of it as well, so. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Nielsen so he can expand on this from the elementary perspective.
Before we move on, I want to give an opportunity for more questions. Ms. Nelling?
I appreciate all of the background with all of these and how it's rolling out to the staff and the students. And I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, it comes with the results that we want from it. I needed to learn a little bit more about Lions Quest, so I got online. And one of the sections that it has is the Families as Partners section. Are we utilizing that at all and bringing in, you know, the home life and the families from a different direction to help support the children?
Through the President, Member Nelling, we, we are definitely utilizing that. I wouldn't say that we've perfected it because it's our first year, but most teachers that see the Lions Quest curriculum see all sorts of potential. And so my guess is that over time, that we will really richly develop kind of upon that curriculum and what we're doing within the district as teachers get more experience with it.
To build the family engagement. I know we have, Member Donley online, I'm going to give him an opportunity because he hasn't had a microphone to speak. Dave, are you interested in making any, asking any questions or making comments?
It, it's been very interesting. I, I don't really have a question at this time, but I'm really excited about it.
Okay, great. If, don't, since, I can't see your hand, don't hesitate to say hello if you want me to recognize you, okay?
Hold on. I'm fine.
Mr. Holloman?
I just wanted to ask, was there a process of looking at several programs like this and picking Lions Quest as one of a group?
Yeah, through the President, Member Holloman, there, there was a, a process, but honestly, Lions Quest approached the school district and asked for this partnership. And the curriculum was reviewed by a team here at the district. And the curriculum is, is very rich and a quality program. So with the offer from Lions Quest and grant funds, we, we needed a replacement for our, our previous curriculum, and so it was a perfect opportunity.
The previous curriculum?
Aggressors, victims, bystanders.
And my, I remember we recognized them here in our Focus on Community and Staff. Can you remind me on what that dollar donation was of curriculum that they gave to the district?
I'm going to refer to the Superintendent if you don't mind.
Madam President, it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the, our group through Jenny Knutson had reviewed some new curriculum, and this was one of the choices that was both Castle-approved with our consortium. It was, so it is approved by Castle. There were a couple of other ones as well, but when Lions Quest came forward, we had, it took about a year to make those arrangements and apply for the grant and get it because it's an international grant. That's when we decided, okay, this, this, out of the three that we had narrowed down to, that was the final, having it been the one that was supported by the Lions, technically.
And then I have a question. So you said there were forty-two thirty, four thousand two hundred and thirty students this year and you estimate twenty-eight seventy-five? Somebody do, how many middle school students do we have? Is this going to hit eventually every middle school by the end of next year?
Yeah. Madam President, it will hit all of our large middle schools. Some of our smaller programs, maybe not. But we don't have a lot of alternative programs at the middle school, so it's relatively few students that wouldn't have access.
Would, would this be possible for those programs that are K-8 to, to have access to this?
Yes. Madam President, we do offer the training. It's just that in, if there is a special mission school, they can opt out of the work. So, but as you know, Polaris was one that said, we'd like to opt in. So Polaris was. And it was supported by the same grant and ASD. And when their teachers came in for the extra day, you know, the stipend that went with that, we, we assisted with. So as time goes on and just word of mouth, it might be something that all choose to do. But when there is a special mission school, we elect to allow them to elect in rather than this is the program we're doing.
And this, it will include charter schools that want to opt in?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Senior Director Johnson. That was a wonderful representation of what you're doing at the secondary level. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to share what we are doing at the elementary level. So what I plan hopefully to do is illustrate what we're currently doing, what it looks like for a child at the elementary level and what some of our next steps moving forward would be. And actually, I had a little time as I was sitting next to Ms. Johnson to, I have my talking notes, but of course I've rearranged some of them. So I'm going to start with something last first. And that's the key thought, to remember that MTSS is not a package that you unwrap and give to a child. It's not a cream you would apply topically to support children or a paste that's going to whiten your teeth or freshen your breath. Rather, you know, MTSS is integrated fully and completely, it should be integrated fully and completely, in a school. A school that is successfully running, supporting students both academically, behaviorally, and emotionally and socially should have a fully-integrated and healthy and robust MTSS program. And so we'll be talking about that. It should be flexible. It should be living and breathing. And it should have multiple unwraps for the kids, for our students, for our girls and our boys, so they can reach academic success. Now, I think you would agree possibly with me if I said that academics and behavior cannot be extracted from one or the other. They are fully part of the same, certainly at the elementary level. And so when a student or students are needing support, we want to make sure that we know what that looks like and we want to make sure that the parents and the staff and the administration know what that looks like and can provide that at our school levels. So first of all, our tier-one students, excuse me, our tier-one, not our students, but our students that might be receiving, living in a tier-one realm, that is where you find your day-to-day, what your, your school looks like. It's the behavior plans, it's the expectations, it's when you walk into the building, you know what to expect, when to expect it, and what it will look like. And at the elementary level, we call that PBIS, which is Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support. And specifically, in the Anchorage School District, we are using the Foundations Program for the majority of our elementary schools, and that comes from Randy Sprick's Safe and Civil Schools. Now, as a piece of context, prior to that, about ten to fifteen years ago, we did not have continuity and uniformity in our processes in our schools. Instead of PBIS, we had something called SWPBS, which is School-Wide Positive Behavior Structures. And we can thank Dr. Jeff Colvin from the University of Oregon. He came and he worked with the Elementary Division for a number of years. And I'm not going to, I don't have as many slides as Director Johnson, but I have more books than she does that I brought up here. Back when Dr. Colvin was working with us, he had a variety of books that he had published that we would read and study and work through. School Management by Walking Around, The Principal Six-Minute Classroom Checklist. And they were wonderful books, but it took a lot of time and effort to coordinate that. Well, with Foundations and the Connected and Respected, excuse me, Foundations and Safe and Civil Schools, we have six different books that we are able to use systemically, modules A through F, that will take us everything from setting the very behavior expectations for the school, all the way down to what it looks like within the classroom, in what it looks like to make an inviting school climate, and what we want every day for our students and for our staff. And that's really key. What, we want to make it ubiquitous for our staff so they have the same verbiage, the same language, and the same expectations. This is a quote, and it's not a great, it doesn't make you necessarily happy, but it's true. "Oftentimes," and this couldn't be said in the past, "you would hear in a school potentially an adult talking to a student in a way that you would never hear that adult talking to another, another adult." It lacked the respect and the dignity that we would afford to a fellow adult. Well, that's one of the things that we really focus on with our Foundations Program, school-wide, is how we interact with our children and with our peers. In the classroom, going another level, that's CHAMP, and that's also part of the Safe and Civil Schools. And CHAMP really causes you to look at how you structure your classroom. As a matter of fact, there's an acronym, STOIC. I think yours was SOLAR, correct? So STOIC, just want to make sure that we're keeping up, I want to make sure that, so. So STOIC stands for Structure Your Classroom, Teach Expectations, Observe and Supervise, Interact Positively, and Correct Fluently. And so that's for the classroom teacher. And that, and, and they have that, the teachers have that in their classroom, they'll have the STOIC, and they'll have each of those sentences so the students know what that expectation is as well. And it helps to structure the conversation in the classroom in which expectations are clear, subjectivity is removed and it's more objective, and that conversations are dignified and preserving the, the integrity of the learning environment for that child and for the adults in the classroom. It allows children from transitioning to their classroom to maybe music or art or health where they have that same checklist or that, that same structure in their classroom. In some of your buildings too, as part of this, you'll see the ratio three to one. You'll see it all around the building, three to one, three to one, three to one. And you should be able to ask a child, what does three to one mean? Well, that's three affirmatives to one, not necessarily negative, but a redirective. So three positives for Director Johnson, and then maybe to one if I have to redirect her. So what we want to do is make it so it is the life's blood of that school. It's as common to them as breathing. And when you walk into the lunchroom, I think, Madam President, you made a question around that, what that would look like in our lunchrooms and our multipurpose rooms, you'll see the very same things. You'll see the STOIC framework, you'll see three to one, you'll see adults ideally interacting with the students with that same expectation of dignity and common respect to one another. And Member Holloman, you had asked about the structure, is it embedded? Is the SEL expectations part of the day-to-day, not just for the students but for the adults? Our very professional development, it has to be vetted through our PLD department. We look to make sure that it is compliant with our SEL standards that we've adopted, our latest ELA adoption, Reach for Reading. When that was vetted, we made sure that the SEL standards were part of that well too, part of that as well too. It's not enough for us to be able to speak it, it has to be, as I said, integrated through everything that we're doing in our school. Now, I made mention of CHAMP. Some schools use something called Connected and Respected, and that goes back again also twenty or so years in the Anchorage School District. That was then called RCCP, Resolving Conflict Creatively. Whereas CHAMP is setting really the structure of a classroom and how we interact with one another, RCCP is really looking at peer interaction. Is it appropriate? Is it respectful? Do we have peers taking on the roles of mediators in our schools? And it is not uncommon to find schools that have melded the two. So we have a CHAMP and Connected and Respected, and the two fit well together. There's no reason why they have to be separate from one another. Chester Valley, as a matter of fact, has been a CHAMP school, had a conversation with them, and next year they're going to be using CHAMP and Connected and Respected. And also too, and this goes back to that interconnectivity, within our very framework for evaluation, the Danielson Framework, we are looking at Domains Number Two, creating an environment of respect and rapport, establishing a culture for learning, and Domains One and Three, demonstrating knowledge of students and communicating with students. Those are also part of the very things that we are evaluating our teachers and our administrators on. And those go directly to what our expectations as far as supporting students in our schools. And that should be, again, ubiquitous across all of our students for all, for all girls and boys. Now, for some students, they have more challenges, they might have greater difficulties. So those would be students that might then access some of the Tier Two supports that we'd find in our schools. Now, I'm going to be very frank and upfront and say that that's an area that need, we are looking at creating greater structure around. It needs to be more robust at the elementary level. Currently, and we'll use an example of a student, and this is what it would look like for a student, we'll use young Glenn Nielsen. He is a third grader in Mrs. Bishop's class. Young Glenn cannot stop talking. As a matter of fact, he cannot, he, he has such a challenge with that that he is disrupting the classroom and he's being sent out into the hallway, which is not a safe and appropriate thing to do, but that's a different topic. So unfortunately, when Mr. Nielsen, young Mr. Nielsen's out in the hallway, he's now going from classroom to classroom at Muldoon Elementary School, and he's looking in the windows, and he's engaging girls and boys as they're attempting to go to the restroom, and he's causing their learning to suffer. So what does the teacher do? What does Ms. Bishop do? Well, she's taking data of all the times that she's had to hopefully three to one direct Glenn, three positives to the one to redirect. She's noting the time of day when she is redirecting it. Typically, she's finding this during transitions, specifically when it's around math, maybe not a subject that Mr. Nielsen is particularly good at as a third grader. And she's wondering, well, how, she, she, she's looking at her data, she's already applied some of the interventions that she knows that she can use, her own tier-one interventions, preferential seating, moving Mr. Nielsen to the front of the classroom, giving him other things to do while other students are working on things, making sure he might have his own sponge activity during a transition. But yet, she finds that it's not mitigating his behavior. And as a matter, as a matter of fact, it potentially has caused, given young third-grade Mr. Nielsen the, the wrong idea that, that this behavior is appropriate and is being rewarded. So now he's doing it more so. So what would she do? What would Ms. Bishop do? Well, in a school, she would go to either her SST team meeting, Student Support Team, her Sit Team, Student Intervention Team, her Focus, her Wolf Team, there, every school has a different name for it. But that truly is their MTSS team, where you'll have a variety of building professionals, you'll have typically a intermediate, a primary teacher, you'll have a specialist teacher, you'll have potentially a school psychologist, a special education teacher. And they'll sit down and they'll look at the data that Ms. Bishop has collected around young Glenn. They'll provide possibly some ideas, some support, some interventions that she's not yet tried. And so that's where then Glenn, young Glenn finds himself receiving Tier Two supports. The work that the classroom teacher has put in, she can identify it, she has codified it, she can share that, but now we're to that next level. And so- And so, there are a few things we can do for young Mr. Nielsen as far as those interventions. If the school has a counselor, and some of our schools do, 25 of them, some of them, the other, the remaining 35 do not. But if the, if the school did have a counselor, young Glenn could take part in a skill streaming, small group session. He could maybe Boys Circle, or, and for young ladies, there's Girls Club or Girls Circle, where students can get together with counselor and work on their social skills. We, potentially, if it was something, if, if the interventions were still not maybe taking a hold for young Mr. Nielsen, it might be an opportunity for the creating successful counselors to come over and observe Mr. Nielsen, and maybe he could be referred to the CSF program, which would be an out-of-school intervention. There is a waitlist for that. Those would be available to a third grade student who is needing Tier Two supports. We would attempt to do as much as possible within the building, but as I made mention, we, we do need to see how we can make that greater, more, greater and more robust for our students. And that's one of the things right now that our MTSS Behavior Team is focusing on. And the MTSS Behavior Team at the district level is myself, Deputy Superintendent Stock, our Director of Elementary Special Education, our Related Services School Psychologist, Paula Patterson. We have our Title One Behavior Team folks, Karen Halpin Title One. And we have Deana Beck, the Principal of our CSF School at Northwood. We've been meeting on a regular basis to look at what we can do to universalize some of the behavior techniques to support students specifically in our Tier Two, that need Tier Two interventions. We have a lot of data right now as to what we've been able to do at some of our schools that do have behavior coaches. And our next step, and this is what we're finishing up the year on, is what will it look like to push that out district-wide? One of the things that we're talking about with our CSF program, currently we're running a couple of classrooms, maybe not next year, but-
Mr. Nielsen, I'm sorry to interrupt. I know that we're coming to the time and they wanted to ask some questions.
Oh, yes.
So, if we can, maybe, maybe we could do specific information on Tier Two issues. But I know that there were some questions due to time limit.
Sure. Thank you.
Of course, I have questions. So, and I don't know if you can answer this, but what majority of our Tier Three or Tier Two, not students, but students that are moved into that instruction are ELL and sped?
Well, that's great. I apologize. I do not have the number in front of me.
Okay. The other one is, one thing I've heard is on this data collection that we do for our students, that maybe the process is too long, and some of our students are not being directed in the areas that they need to go into. So, and I don't know how long that data process takes or what we're looking at. How would, what would you say about that?
Well, I actually anticipated that question. You know, I think when you see, when you're an adult, a caring adult, and you see a child in need, that even if it takes a week, that can seem like it's too long. And that's just the fact of the matter. And there are some students, when their behaviors are so atypical that you realize, well, if we were going to spend maybe two or three or four weeks taking data, I don't think we would need to do that. All that to say that there really isn't a set in stone. It's going to be six weeks or six days. It really is student and situation-specific.
Might I add to that? When we talk about student behaviors, many time, it, it is back to the tools in my bag that I learned. So, sometimes it is an adult reaction that sets it off. So, just a mind's eye picture of CHAMPs. I don't really know what those letters stand for right now, but you would technically, a transition in a classroom, or how, when is it appropriate in a third grade or whatever to go sharpen a pencil? And generally, what happens is, just to give Mr. Glenn, a student, the first time when, we're supposed to sharpen pencils at a break, not when I'm instructing. But, you know, this quiet little girl generally goes up and sharpens the pencil, and it's like, uh, you know, because our pencil sharpeners are thing. Teacher looks up, but okay, she does it quietly. She sits back down. Generally, what happens is, you know, somebody who's rambunctious and in the classroom and is, looks at that and is like, shoot, the rules were not due, but that guy, she got away with it. So, then guess what that student does? And then because the adult reached that level of, ah, I let it go once, that second child is the one that's addressed. So, really, part of CHAMPs is taking the emotion out of it. It's very objective. It's like, then you say, the redirection would be, we don't sharpen our pencils. And then, but then you automatically, we know that for students to find that they're liked and not, they, they believe then, when they're redirected, sometimes that adults don't like them. So, it's difficult to redirect and then still have a great relationship. So, it's literally a scientific thing that three redirects, or three affirmations to a redirect. So, I mean, it's very scientific. And what we do for the reading is, when you transition from one thing to the next, that's generally when kids aren't engaged. And it's like, okay, what do I do now? So, we CHAMP, if you will, turn it into a verb, every transition so that the teachers, we give them examples. But the length of the time isn't necessarily just for a child. The length of a time is, maybe I, as an adult, need to learn how to work with kids that are different. You know, so, that's why the data is probably hard. But it isn't, we don't want to say it's always a difficult child. It could be a difficult situation. It could be a large class size. That has a lot to do with a lot of these, is that the kids are shoulder to shoulder because we're increasing our class size. So, it's really taking a look at, could we arrange the furniture? Is it the furniture? Is it next, who they're sitting next to? All those things that Glenn suggested. So, it, it's really studied as a team approach rather than, oh, this kid has this problem. So, we try to look at it as that team approach.
Hold on. I want to ask a question. So, since I'm in the business of interpretation and translation, is it fair to say then that the Lion's Quest and Capturing Kids' Heart, those two programs that are utilized in the secondary, would be equivalent to Foundations CHAMPs STOIC at the elementary school?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam President, can I add to that? Foundations is getting implemented also at the secondary level. This is our first year working through it. So, our staff at the secondary level is also working through the Foundations process. Because it's more, the Foundation system is more about process than it is a program necessarily.
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Marsette.
So, I've actually read that book, CHAMPs. It was given to me three years ago by Claire Fulp, before I got on the school board. So, I'm very familiar with it. I think it's a great program to follow. My other question is, are we tracking our students that are in the reverse, that are moving from Tier Three to Tier Two, to back to Tier One? And what are those percentages? And how successful is it? And not just on the behavior, but on the academic side also?
Sure. And I don't have actual numbers for you, but I can share with you, Willwire Elementary School as an example. They are tracking that. Because what they want to do, not surprisingly, is recreate that which is allowing those students to be successful to work their way back to the universal of Tier One. So, that, many of our schools are doing that. Because they want to make sure, if we've found something that's efficacious, how can we repeat that?
Great. Thank you very much. I think at this point, we're going to move on in our agenda. If other board members come up with more questions, we can always invite this team to come back. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Madam President, the next item was the Native Advisory Committee update. And I believe that, not sure, oh, here, we do have person here. All right.
Hi, I'm Ricky. I'm serving as your staff representative to the Native Advisory Committee.
Could you state your full name and spell it for our records?
Ricky Lind Jr., R.I.C.K.Y.L.I.N.D. suffix, junior. I also teach music at Winterberry and Rolka Shula. Can I begin?
Yes, you may please.
Oh, thanks. Our recent activity featured from previous meetings with the quorum, which was January, included nine items. I separated them for you in a group of three for our future planning, and then a group of six for our current events. So, I'll start from the future and work my way back. The ASD Title VI, Senior Directors, to hold individual meetings for Tribe Consultation for our upcoming annual grants. And the Native Advisory Committee elections are opening in April, and tentative election May 24th. I'm currently serving a two-year term as a staff rep. Our Aeronautics themed summer programs will consist of three two-week sessions at two sites, Eagle River High and Wendler Middle, and possibly Kincaid Elementary. Enrollment capacity is approximately 120 students for those programs. And our current partners are UAA and KCC, or Future King Tech. Our current events include a committee bylaws draft, in which we followed your model with an advisory vote from your student rep, for an at-large tribal rep to cast an advisory vote when they attend our meetings. And completion of a recent bias training by Anchorage School District Librarians. A recent hire, it's called a Temporary Transition Social Services Coordinator. They are currently serving 25 students between West High School and Highland Academy. And a current opening for Youth Development Tutor in Susitna Elementary. The Title VI staff received a Dreams facilitator training back in February regarding our project, I almost pronounced it keel, but it's actually kala, which is a six, it's featured on our website. You've probably seen. And a six-item Alaska Native Empowerment Program at five of our schools here in Anchorage. And a recent development, which is called a Tutor on Wheels, has expressed, has expressed a poor connection with some students, but they have expressed the need to remain at one school for four days and at the second school for one day per week. And our next Title VI meeting is Thursday, March 22nd at 6:00 PM here in the Ed Center in the Orange Room. And we're working on getting teleconference ability for that so that anyone who wants to tune in could tune in via teleconference. And we're excited for the addition of a UPIC Immersion School at College Gate Elementary. And we have invited Rolka Shula as principal to discuss what Rolka Shula is doing to preserve the German curriculum. They have a curriculum coordinator. And if you have any questions regarding this report, go ahead and email me at lind_ricky@asck12.org, or you could call Doreen Brown, extension 4445. Thanks.
Great. Any questions? Thank you so much for that report. Appreciate it. Okay. The next item on our agenda has to do with board communication with the community. And board members were apprised in the update from the President on Friday that Board Member Donley had a commentary published in the Anchorage Daily News approximately 10 days ago on why he did not vote for the budget of the CIP. And subsequently, he went on a talk radio program to discuss the six-year CIP as well as some other issues. And some of the board members communicated to me as president their dismay at his actions, and they expressed an interest in providing a response to the media as soon as possible. We did not have a board meeting prior to that with spring break and all. So, what I did is, the different feedback that was provided to me, a draft was prepared, and it was shared with board members on, with that update on Friday. The board has not had an opportunity to discuss this with each other as that would be a violation of the Open Meeting Act. So, we put this on the agenda for this time. Mr. Donley is on a line telephonically, as I mentioned earlier. And it's an opportunity for board members to give input as to this response, as well as indicate if they would like this, if they would like to sign on to this response and send it to the media. So, I'm going to open up the discussion at that point. Ms. Marsette?
I think I, I believe that we do need to forward this on to the media just because I think some of the information was not communicated correctly and that there were some corrections or educating, I guess, that we might need to do just as far as the community and making sure. My understanding is there have been received phone calls about some of this information, or persons asking questions. And so, with that in mind, I think it is important to make sure that we are giving the community the correct information.
Mr. Donley?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with us having a response.
Oh, excuse me, Holloman. Excuse me.
It was close enough. I'm in agreement, except that the part mentioning the ASB Code of Conduct, I think it is important for us to speak, as long as it's clear we're speaking individually. You know, I think Mr. Donley made it clear that, that these were his thoughts, his actions. He didn't offer the, the counter side to it, and I can understand that. So, I, in terms of saying it violates a code of conduct, I, I probably will violate that code at some point. I haven't yet, I don't think, but, but I'll get there. So, I'm not really in agreement with that particular part of it. But, but otherwise, I, I do think it's worth getting the discussion out there so people can see the different sides. It did come up and was discussed in committee, which I think he, he should have mentioned. And, and if it hadn't been, I think we might have discussed it at the business meeting where he introduced it. But we had talked about it as a group. I think he understood what our position was. And it might have been helpful if he had advised us that he was going to make a public issue out of it.
Other board member comments. Ms. Nelling?
All right. So, I printed everything out. And Andy, I had the same, you know, last thing highlighted on my side as well, that I do take exception to that as well. Because he used the word I, 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 you know, throughout this entire article. And so, I want to be careful where, you know, it doesn't cross, you know, some of his free speech, you know, abilities as well. And I understand the intent between the speaking with one voice, but I don't think the two are connected quite entirely. And so, I wouldn't sign on if that is something that is there. I have no problem putting a counterpoint out or anything like that. I guess, this is my first time, you know, seeing this. This was when it was sent out on Friday. I am, because I hadn't heard any previous discussion on it. I'm curious as to who did the write-up on this document and where some of the disagreement with his opinion piece came out. Because it also came out as an opinion piece, not, you know, the front page of the newspaper or something like that. So, I'm just, I'm curious to see who-
I, I did the drafting based on the feedback that I was getting from board members.
Okay. Would those board members care to identify themselves?
Sure.
You would?
And, and I could make a comment. I had, well, I've had quite a few community councils that I've attended. And, and this is, it did come up. I had questions from not only community councils, but, but also from constituents. And the information wasn't quite correct in terms of what the initial one was. All of the information wasn't there. And so, I was doing a lot of correcting of people. And that's why I, why I went to TAM and said, hey, I think, I think we need to correct the misstatements. Because I was having people say that because of that, they were looking at not voting for the bonds, which to me was a worry.
Ms. Marsette?
I was also the other one. And, you know, just for one example, was the study that he referred to. And that study was actually, it was on the capital improvements. And that was actually done three years ago in December of 2014. And we have addressed some of the issues that, that he was speaking about. And to me, it's just, it's education. It's just about educating. It's not, you know, I, I just want the public and the community to know, and, and Mr. Donley, maybe to know that even if we're speaking for ourselves, we have to make sure that the information that we're giving is correct. Because even though we're speaking for ourselves, people still see us as board members. And we've, we've just got to have the responsibility of getting our information, the statistics of getting our information, the statistics or the hard, concrete information correct.
Ms. Plunkett?
I will agree with the prior speakers, though, that the last piece is not necessarily needed for sending out a letter to update the facts.
Are you referring to starting from "the" ASB code?
Yes.
And ending in the word "voice"?
Yes.
So I'd like to poll the board in terms of if that paragraph or that final, it's not a paragraph, two sentences was removed, is that meet the desire of the board? Ms. Plunkett? I'm giving thumbs up. Ms. Marsette? Reservations?
Can we maybe read what the, I mean, I know we've read it, but just for further discussion, can we read what the ASB Code of Conduct? I know it says, "Board Members Will Respect Official Board Decisions Recognizing That The Board Speaks With One Voice After A Decision Has Occurred." And if that's, and I know, you know, there's been board members, and maybe even myself might at one time do this, but if we have a code of conduct that says that, and we're going to disregard that, and we voted on it as a board, I don't have a question about whether putting this in the paper. I have a question about the code of conduct if we're not going to follow it.
Do I have other board members input on that? Mr. Holloman?
Yeah, I think it's worth going and reading that. I do think that this board gets criticized more often for not disagreeing with each other. And I've heard the comment more than once from people, is every vote going to be a 7-0 vote? And most of them are, because details have been mashed out in committees, and not very many people attend committee meetings, and I don't blame them. But by the time it comes to a vote, it is a compromise that we've all looked at and worked with. And I think for a lot of the general public that sees it come and sees it be unanimous, it looks like we're not really discussing it. So I think it's healthy that it's out there, that we have different opinions about it, but at the same time, I also understand that we are not representing constituencies. We are managing the district, and we come to that compromise, and we all do need to support it. It is the compromise that we have arrived at. So I think more discussion out there would be worthwhile, and if the ASB Code really discourages that, then we may look at pulling that from our policy. But I would have to go read it and see.
Yeah, the wording of the code is exactly as I quoted here, about "the respect official board decisions recognizing that the board speaks with one voice after a decision has occurred." And I know my own situation over the six years I've been on this board, where I was outvoted, but once the board made the decision, then I respected the will of the board, and I did not go out and speak publicly in differentiation to what the board had passed. And so I think, you know, I would argue vehemently against pulling that from it, because unlike other, I mean, from our court of conduct, I understand pulling it from this letter. But I think there is a fine line if you are out in the public, and it's very difficult to differentiate your identity as a board member and a private citizen when you speak. And when I'm out there speaking, I'm very self-conscious of the fact that I cannot necessarily express my own personal opinions all the time, because the board has spoken in a different manner. Up until the time when it does, that's a different, that's a different discussion, until the board has voted on something. And often, I will poll the public and individuals in our community to get their feedback on, to help inform my decision. But, so, I don't think this is, I think the discussion, Ms. Marsette, to answer your question, on the code of conduct, I think that's something to be taken up at a different point. I think the discussion at hand is if this letter, and I'm hearing a recommendation with removal of the last two lines, if this is one, do we want to send it, and do all six board members who originally voted for the budget, affirmative on the budget and the CIP, if they want to fix their names to this. I also want to give an opportunity for Mr. Donley to make any comments, if he wishes.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I absolutely identified that this was from me as an individual member of the board, and not in any way the position of the board. Second, this version that was published was edited, and the parts that were edited out were the actual quotations from the 2014 study that I was pointing out. I had no control over the newspaper editing those portions out, and that would have clarified exactly what I was referencing. Additionally, I had included the actual board policy presentation that had been given earlier this year regarding the CIP, and that also was edited out. So the context of what I wrote was in relation to those actual quotations, and of course, that's something that's a result of space limitations. I wish that we had the ability to publish much longer informational pieces, because then they would give you the opportunity to go point, counterpoint. So, but you're faced with severe time limitations, I just tried to do my best to clearly explain why I, as an elected public official, voted as I did. You might remember that last year, we had some very persuasive legal research that I had identified, federal court cases, that clearly stated that elected officials have extraordinary First Amendment right to freedom of speech on political and public policy matters. I do not believe that our code of conduct, which says board members will respect official decisions, should be in any way interpreted as a killing of free speech. That would be completely unconstitutional. What it can be interpreted, and the way I interpreted it, when I agreed to it, was that the interaction between the board and individual members should be done with utmost respect. And in fact, I did set, I did so do that in the article, because I do believe that all the board members, as I stated in my article, are doing what they think is best for our kids. And I in no way casted expersions or any individual criticism to any individual board member. I mentioned no one by name, and specifically acknowledged in several points that there were counterarguments to my position. So I think I did, I did this article with the utmost of respect, completely consistent with our code of conduct, because if you want to interpret the code of conduct differently, then you have an unconstitutional code of conduct, clearly in violation of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, which provides freedom of speech, and has been interpreted that political speech and speech on matters of public policy, especially by public officials, is the single highest form of protected speech that the federal courts will ensure is protected. And I very much appreciate this discussion. I appreciate the position of the board, and I really have no qualms with the arguments put forth. I think they're fair, legitimate, in this letter, and I welcome that getting out into the public discussion.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Donley. So at this point, I guess, to bring this discussion to a close, unless there are further points the board members want to bring up, with the elimination of the last two lines of this, and the offering of this as a counterpoint commentary, do board members support this? So I need to have a straw poll. Ms. Marsette? Ms. Davis? Do you support putting your name on this letter?
I, I.
Put your mic up, please.
I don't see the need for the letter at this time. I think that we need to have, not here, just in this particular meeting, but we need to have more time to really go over that again, because it might not even be necessary for us to send a letter out at all, if we feel that no one has violated anything.
Well, this letter is not addressing a code of conduct violation at this point.
I understand, and so the letter is going to?
Address some of the.
And who is it going to?
To the Anchorage Daily News, an offer of a counter-commentary on the letter that he wrote, to expand on the points that he brought up in his letter, whether intentionally or unintentionally left out by the editor when they edited his letter, to expand the information that the public has. So what they, when they're making decisions concerning the board's budget and the capital improvements that might impact our bonds, that they have that information.
But he's saying that there was information that he did give that was not given.
Right.
Right?
Which means there are some holes.
So how did he get that letter corrected now?
Holes in the information. And I would welcome, and I'm going to ask Mr. Donley, to have a copy of the original letter, so that if that impacts what is stated in this letter, I can make changes. Mr. Donley, could I get a copy of your original letter that you mailed?
Absolutely, Madam President. I will be home by Wednesday.
Do you have it in electronic format you could email to me?
I, I'm not sure whether I can electronically email it before Wednesday.
Okay. Okay. In that case, then, is, what does the board wish? Do you want me to send this out again after I look at his, or is there somebody else on the board that wants to take on that role? Or do you want to leave it as is? Ms. Marsette?
Can we send out the information, given the timeline, and actually just put in there that it's our understanding that maybe Mr. Donley's article was edited, and so all the information was not there, and we just want to make sure that the public is educated?
Yes. I could do that. Would that meet your needs, Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So I look forward to receiving that electronic copy, Mr. Donley. At this point in our agenda, we move to focus on staff, students, and community, and Dr.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Deena Bishop, and I am the Superintendent of ASD. At this point in our board meeting, the board places its focus on the people who make ASD great, and the people are our staff and students and community members that are partners in education. We have some young folks coming in now. So with that, we have four items for today to celebrate, because our students and staff do so well. But at this point in time, I'm going to start with a really awesome award, the 40 Under 40. Could Sean Bernard and Grayson Davy please come forward? And Grayson isn't here. This is Sean. Come on forward. Grayson's mom is here, I hope. Did Grayson's mom attend? So she was going to try to come up, because he's at an out-of-state competition, but we'll talk about both of them. So, to my left is one of Alaska's top 40 Under 40. It's an award sponsored by the Alaska Journal of Commerce, and it recognizes the state's top young professionals, of course, younger than 40, who have demonstrated professional excellence and a commitment to our community. Sean Bernard is ASD's very own Assistant Director for Early Childhood and Elementary Special Education. He inspires other leaders by sharing his mantra, "When you believe in yourself, you can accomplish so much more." He models and teaches others to have confidence in the decisions they make. As a leader, Sean emphasizes to others to start each and every day in ways that will lead all of our students, schools, and colleagues in the right direction to achieve all of their goals. The best leaders in the educational system make it a point to lead by example and not simply by their words. Sean knows that if we want students to speak kindly to one another in the hallways, we must always be kindly as well. If we want our students to show respect, we show them what that means. Sean believes this method is effective and powerful, and helps us teach students skills they will need for the rest of their lives. Perhaps his most important trait of being an educational leader is believing in our students and the power of education itself. Sean believes it's vital to believe in what our schools are trying to accomplish each and every day, and to convey our enthusiasm for change. His motivation to make things better inspires, he inspires the confidence in those around him. His words and actions directly impact morale. When you are around Sean for any amount of time, you will immediately see his passion for education, and you will feel it too. Congratulations, Sean Bernard. And Sean, as a tradition, whenever you do staff and students, so be ready, students as well, I turn over the mic for you to say whatever you'd like to say to us. This mic is only unidirectional, and you have to hold it really close, sorry.
So the only thing I have to say is I'm really proud to be a part of Anchorage School District. I joined in 2013, and I have enjoyed the family of special education, and I really appreciate it, and the great things that we do for students and staff.
You're absolutely terrific. Stay up here. There, Grayson, as I said, Grayson Davy, he's a student, and he couldn't be here with us this evening. And did his mom come in since I've started? Nope? Okay, so I'm going to share that Grayson, an ASD student, was also one of our top 40 Under 40, and he is the youngest ever to be awarded this award. So he shares with Sean this award for 2018. So Grayson, I'll read about him, so that if you ever see Grayson, you can say, "I heard about you, Gray." So he's a thoughtful, enterprising young man with a product whose outcome was based on the most human of stories. A friend's struggle for survival in the Alaskan wilderness led Grayson to adapt a common scouting activity into a sensible, sales-worthy, and life-saving product. He's built a successful and growing business based on the best of all motivators. His product keeps people in trouble safe in the most harsh conditions until rescue is available. Grayson holds solid grades, runs a business, and continues to be a world leader in competitive shooting. Few individuals Grayson's aides ever even come close to what he's accomplished for the 40 Under 40. Congratulations, Sean and Grayson, for your accomplishments, and you absolutely do help ASD be great. But I don't have any information on his actual invention, so we'll have to have him, but I'll have to get that. So we're going to take a quick photo of Sean. Congratulations. Next, if we can have John Peterson and, is it Simone? Simeon? Baird, and please come forward. Simeon? Did I get, Simeon? Simeon? Okay. Congratulations. Congratulations. We've met you before. You've been here before. All right. So I'd like to now announce the Boys and Girls Clubs Youth of the Year. Simeon and John have been named the 2018 Boys and Girls Clubs of America Alaska State Youth and Alaska Military Youth of the Year, each receiving a $5,000 scholarship and will advance to the regional event, as well as $1,500 from UAA. Students selected as a Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year must embody the values of leadership and service, academic excellence, and healthy lifestyles. They should exemplify, what these gentlemen exemplify right now, the critical impact that Boys and Girls Clubs have on the lives of young people. John Peterson, the Alaska State Youth of the Year, Military Youth of the Year, is finishing his senior year at Eagle River High School. Upon graduation, he plans to attend Texas Tech, you're going to be a Red Raider, all right, university, seeking a double major in history and education. John is an avid runner that has participated in several sports and has been. John is an avid runner that has participated in several sports and has been involved in many clubs throughout his high school career. When it comes to overcoming challenges, John encourages peers to utilize the resources available through the youth center. Simeon Bairdine is the Boys and Girls Club's Alaska State Youth of the Year. He is preparing to graduate from East High School this spring, with plans to attend college in Everett, Washington to play basketball. Club staff described Simeon as motivated and persistent. He has played a large role in helping to organize several club events to make his community safer for youth. Simeon aspires to lead by example and show the youth in his community that everybody is capable of success. Congratulations to you both on your Boys and Girls Club's Youth of the Year awards. These are very much coveted in our district, as well as in the state, so I'm so proud that you two have been given this award. With that, I know that their principals are in the audience, and I think you would like with your principals' pictures, right? So come on up. I saw Sam is here, as well as Marty. And, um, oh, that's fine. Um, I'm going to offer the mic, and actually, I wanted her to actually do these awards, and we went so quickly. But this is our Vice President star, Marsette, and she sits on the board and actually was in the selection process. It was a blind process, so she didn't know who you were or where you were from. She just was able to read what you all, what you both have done, and so she's going to say a few words.
It was very hard. We have some amazing students and young people in our community, and these two really exemplify, sorry, I get emotional, these two really exemplify what our students and what our youth are capable of. And I just look forward to watching them and their careers and as they move forward, and I wish them the best at the Western Regionals.
Excellent. And gentlemen, the mic is yours.
Hello. Uh, so this is my third high school in four years, and I just want to say how blessed I feel to have come to Eagle River. I mean, they have been fantastic to me and all the opportunities they've given me. And I'd also like to thank my mother and father. My father, he's in the military, of course, and everything he does for our country is so amazing. I just love him. Thank you.
Well, I'm not from here. I'm from Dallas, Texas, and it was kind of like a great move coming here, being welcomed at East Anchorage High School. Starting off first, it was pretty rough. Ms. Spinella was pretty hard on me, but... Oh, dear, we build a great relationship, and I just hope that I can just be a great example for the younger generation, fine. Thank you.
We're going to get together. Take a picture. This will be for our website. Get really close, like a little... You can step in, Marty. The third award is actually going to be presented by Kirsten Johnson Struppler this evening, as the former principal of South High School. She's going to take this.
Thank you. Um, so the next award goes to Molly and Lauren McCabe. Could you come forward? So Molly and Lauren McCabe spearheaded the South Anchorage High School Chains of Caring Campaign to benefit Providence Children's Hospital and district-wide fundraising drive for the hospital. So they participated on South's behalf, and the girls pledged to shave their hair, okay, if they collected over $5,000. So clearly, you made your goal, right? So they actually ended up raising over $9,000, and... Okay, there's an update.
$10,755.
So, just a little about Molly and Lauren's story. Both are members of South Student Government, as well as a lot of other activities, extracurricular activities, and community activities. Molly's a senior, and Lauren's a sophomore, so I know them both from when I was the principal there. So Molly came up with the idea of shaving her head, which was, does not surprise me, and asked her younger sister, Lauren, who's also in student government, to shave her head with her. So I heard the story was that it was like during passing time, and you just thought it was a great idea?
Yeah.
Okay. So the girls told the school if they could raise $5,000, they would raise their head, or shave their head, and a task they felt they could, that would be hard to achieve, but they ended up collecting a lot of money in a short amount of time. So the announcement was made on Monday that they would, they would shave their heads if they raised $5,000. The numbers quickly started to rise, and by the end of the week, the girls knew that their long hair would be no more. Okay? So, the reason that Molly and Lauren decided to give back in this way is that they like to help anyone who's fighting cancer, because they know what it's like to lose their hair. They also know what it's like to battle the disease and lose someone they, they love. So Molly said in one of her interviews, "Our mom passed away from cancer. Our little 10-year-old brother is now fighting cancer, so we know what the families have been through, which is why, why hair doesn't matter." And then Lauren said in one of her interviews, "Both of our mom and our brother had their head shaved. They both kind of struggled with being bald, so we thought, maybe we could give back to some of the kids who had to do that." So the girls both donated their hair to the panting program, and we just want to thank you so much for being so generous and for motivating our community and our district. So thank you so much. All right, so the superintendent, so the superintendent always turns the mic over, so I'm going to turn the mic over to you. What was, what was special about this program, or doing this for you, for your community?
Um, so my mom was President of the Children's Trust and President of the Alaska Zoo, and, I mean, I, my favorite quote is, "I always wondered why no one did anything, and then I realized that I am somebody." And so, I mean, it's just hair, it grows back, and it's really cool to see how the community came together. And honestly, when we walked in the first day, you know, we had no hair, which is kind of weird, and a bunch of teachers and students cheered, like, as we walked in. And it's just crazy, like, you guys made it happen. We raised $10,755 because of all of you. And it's all going to the Providence Children's Hospital, sorry, she's here, and it's to help kids like my little brother, who's actually in the backpack there. Like, have a comfortable stay at the hospital, and have teachers and... Sorry.
This was just a really cool experience, you know, having a lot of community sense with our school and other schools, and it's just really nice to see our school district come together and reach our goal and exceed our goal.
Yeah, it wasn't even just South, like, a bunch of Diamond kids donated, and he's almost, I think every school probably at least saved, like, a dollar or two.
Oh, sorry. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, I'm hijacking the mic. My name is Mary Ann Yonelson, I'm with Providence Alaska Foundation, and I'm so happy to be here to honor you two amazing women. We've partnered with the Anchorage School District to host Chains of Caring for many, many years, and we do it to help teach kids about philanthropy, but I think in this situation, Molly and Lauren are the ones who are teaching us about philanthropy, and it just goes to show that when you have the desire to do something really great, and just the passion and the heart behind it, you can achieve great things.
So I also want to introduce their current principal, Wendy Pontafino, and then their student government advisor, Troy Christensen. So Troy, do you want to say anything about these girls?
I'm going to put you on the spot. These are two of our greatest leaders here, not just at our school, but in the district. When you look at them, and when you represent, when you look at a representation of what we want to see in our graduates, you look at Molly, and you're going to look at Lauren here in two years. So I can't be more proud of these two young ladies for all their efforts, and all of their dedication, and putting themselves out there like that. And don't they look good?
Yes.
Great job, ladies.
Picture time. Do you want to bring your little brother up?
Yeah.
Yeah?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, our final award goes to a whole team, and I'm going to call each person's name. Not all members could be here, but we're going to say their name. We are recorded publicly forever in time. Someone will know that they were the 2018 state champions for hockey. So-
Go Diamond!
Go Diamond, yeah. Here we go, the Diamond Lynx Hockey Team, please come forward. Gabby Gibson, I'm not sure if your managers were here, nope, or players. Tanner O'Hara, Landon Reed, Gavin Hardy, Jaden Gibson, Garrett Micknick, Mick, Micknick, Mick, Mick, come on up. Jared Hall, Tyler Graber, Max Hickel, Justin Maxwell, Dylan Hui, Brendan Anaruck, Drake Reed. We could just give them all to their coach, and then they could sort them out later if we wanted to, yeah. Drake, as Drake is coming up, Hunter Katniss. Oh, that's a cool name, now that that looks out there, Katniss. There you go. I want Katniss. Matthew Driscoll, Blake Hossinger, Shawn Carey, Brennan Lipkin, Teague Porter, Jack Dolan, Dawson Thompson, Michael Flattery, Jacob Hall. Are the two Jacobs related? Jared and Jacob, all right. And the head coach, Dennis Sorensen's here? He's not here? Chris Higgins? Our assistant coach is here? I mean, Gabby's a number-one player. What does Gabby do? Lauren Hermes, manager?
Gabby's the goalie.
Gabby's the goalie. Dang, and she's not here? And Nicole Beckala, not here, manager. Okay, so- The principal's here, and we'll call her up, but these are the folks that took the 2000 state hockey after, I believe it was a tight game in 2017. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, you came back a year later, and who are the seniors on the team to put this thing away? To make sure that you left Diamond High School a state hockey winner. Uh, there's a long history of excellence in hockey at Diamond High School, and whom is it here that, I'm going to turn the mic over, oh, after I say all the, wait a minute, the good things that we've prepared. This is what we know about you. The Diamond Hockey Team is the 2018 Division One Alaska State Champions. They're led by a group of eight seniors, raise your hand. The Diamond Hockey Team dominated all season, but it was a trio of sophomores that put the Lynx on the road to victory in the first National Cup State Hockey Final against Service. So who are the sophomores? Get called out, there you go. In front of a packed house at the Bernard Sports Center, Drake Glover, Lane Bauer, and Josh Larson notched the game's first three goals in a 6-1 victory over Service. Technically, it wasn't even close. Daniel, uh-
That's a good story.
Yeah. Who did you play? You played West Valley. Oh, this one, I wonder if somebody pulled the CIC? Did you beat them in the CIC?
No, we have a tough tournament in the CIC.
Oh, well, you know what? I'm going to let Diamond Hockey talk about it, because this is what was prepared. But it sounds good, listen to this. The Lynx caught fire! They caught fire at the end of the first period, scoring goals. Glover fired a shot from the left wing that went into the far post, and Bauer, who was named Player of the Game. Did Bauer get named Player of the Game? Oh, he did as well, so he must be awesome. All right, so with that, I'm just going to turn it over. As you know, it is history. They actually were the 2018 state champions from your Diamond High School, the Lynx. So where's my captain?
Yeah, these boys deserve a lot of credit. Uh, seniors, they led the way, they pushed the guys, but the young guys really stepped up in a way I can't even imagine, both academically and on the ice. If you guys didn't know, we did win the academic award, we were... And then shortly after we won state, proving to all that we were the smartest and the best team. But a lot of credit has to be given to the coaches, who know how to run a terrific program, all the parents who pushed these guys at home to get their homework done, rest up, and ultimately raise a fine group of boys.
Oh, excellent. You're an awesome guy.
I should have contacted you to write that little... So, anyone else like to speak? How about Ms. Johnson-Harris? Would you like to say a few words about this team here? And I, I did predict that you guys came off of, this is the second state champion after your volleyball team took state champion. And, yeah, so we might, is there anything else in store for Diamond High this year? Because you guys are just killing it. Here you go.
I just want to say that I'm very proud of all of our sports programs. Academics comes first, and I do tell them that we want to make sure we're excellent in the classroom and on the field. I tend to think that because I have an interest in sports and cheering them on and making sure that they have good sportsmanship, that they do well. They see us at the games all the time, and parents come up to administration and thank us for attending. I think it's very important that, as a community, they see their leadership at these events. And so, I'm elated, I missed that particular game, but I got play-by-play, and when I was at the fundraiser that I was at, I jumped up, and they said, "Why are you jumping up?" And I said, "Because Diamond won," and they're like, "Ah!" But yeah, I was there in spirit.
And you have your own jersey.
I have my own 50-year anniversary jersey. So, go Lynx!
I'm just extremely proud of these fellows on, on the ice and off the ice. Again, the conference academic award, and then the state academic award, that's something they can be proud of. Yeah, so, but thank you all for recognizing us.
Excellent. We are so proud of these guys. Gentlemen, this is your time to talk to your board. Do you want to, does anybody want a mic? Oh, you're going to take it? Would you like the mic, too? No? Okay. I must say that they're the sharpest dressed team that we've ever had come up. They're like brown pants, nice. Ladies and gentlemen, your Diamond High Lynx!
Go Diamond!
At this time, we did have one of our students arrive, Grayson. Where's Grayson? He isn't here. Oh, they said he wasn't here, I was still. But his mom is here. Could you come forward? You know what? We wanted to know, and how are you, by the way? Nice to see you. We did talk about him and how he does well at shooting, but we wanted to know what his invention was. Like, what did he come up with that he was recognized for, for the safety and... So this is Grayson's mom, remember what we said about Grayson? Top 40 Under 40, the youngest member? She's here to tell us what it was that his, because we were talking about it earlier, so.
Well, thank you. He created survival products, so he has three main products. They're, they all have the ability to make a fire. There's a bracelet, and there's two keychains. So the business is Alaska Pericord Designs, and the main product started with a bracelet that has a fire steel, wax chute down the center, and a scraper embedded down the center strand. And so basically, the idea of it is if you fall out of a boat and you swim to shore, you have everything you need on you- have everything you need on you to be able to make a fire. And it started when he was 11 years old, and we had a lodge out on the Talalitna, and our caretaker and his daughter went out on the river, flipped their boat, and they ended up in the river. Nobody knew they were gone, and they were out there late August, and they were stranded for three days, and it was really cold and scary, and they had no way to make a fire. And they finally got rescued, and on their way back, my husband flew them back in the plane. They said, "If we only could have made a fire, that would have made all the difference in the world." They could have signaled for help, they would have been able to stay warm. It would have made all the difference in the world. So he started making, he had been making Pericord bracelets, and then him and his dad started working on what he could do to put more things into it so they could have more functionality. So he started selling at the Spinnard Market, and then he started selling more wholesale. He did the Young Entrepreneurs Academy through the Anchorage Chamber of Commerce, and he had an incredible mentor from the University of Alaska Anchorage, Al Herman, who helped him figure out how to scale the business. He couldn't make all the products himself. He had to hire workers to be able to make the products, and he needed to get the cost of the goods down so that he could wholesale them to sell more. So that's what he did. So he started, he has 19, mostly kids working for him, but he has a couple stay-at-home moms as well. So he's got 19 jobs that he brought to Alaska, and he has a number of stores that he wholesales to, a lot of the gift stores all throughout Alaska, and then he has the online sales as well. So he grew his business from, you know, a couple thousand dollars to about $80,000 now. So he...
And he hasn't graduated high school yet?
No. No. But he will, he's doing, he's a family partnership, and he's doing the APU's early honors program. So that helps him. So he's, he did his entire spring semester in January and February. So he's, so that's how he's able to go down and shoot in his competitions. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and we have an award for him. And then we read a long list of his accomplishments, but we didn't know what exactly it was. So thank you for coming and sharing that with us. Thanks. He is one person that makes ASD great. Thank you.
That concludes our focus on staff, students, and community, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the work session to move into executive session.
I move to adjourn the work session and move into executive session for the purpose of uncontested student hearing.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any dissension? We are adjourned into executive session. Thank you very much.